Academy, let's continue to educate and as we grow, because we're going to do that here in Ponte Gorda, we don't want to be left behind. There was always a oneness. My mother-in-law is 93 years old. She's lived in Ponte Gorda for 78 years. When I asked her, what did they call it? She said, always Ponte Gorda. We're known as Ponte Gorda, so let's be that. Let's get together, do what we have to do, take nothing from each other, expand and just be the best that we can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Regular agenda items, now would be the time.
Good morning. Martha Beretta, I am a resident of Ponte Gorda, live at 402 Ida Avenue. The new Historic District Homeowners Association desires to have a united district from a branding perspective. We ask that the city council vote affirmatively on the recommendation made by the Historic Preservation Board to remove the name Tribune Woods and to rename or rebrand the area as East Ponte Gorda Historic District. However, in terms of signage, there would be no separation in signage. We are asking that there be one historic district. As you come across the bridge on 41, you see Historic District. Historic District comes from Ponte Gorda Isles all the way to Cooper Street. When you come into Ponte Gorda at Cooper Street, there would be a sign that simply says Historic District. We would like to once again, remove all symbolic names that suggest a separation of our communities. I have lived here all of my life. I was not aware of any other name for this community except Ponte Gorda. And so, we're asking that the city council approve the recommendation that we have one historic district. District that runs from Ponte Gorda Isles to Cooper Street, from Marion to Ida Avenue. In terms of branding, that will be remarkable for Ponte Gorda. It represents our true history. As we are separated now, that is a fabricated history. Our four African-Americans who voted to take away the name Tribune would be just offended that they knew that part of their area take on the name Tribune which they voted to discard. So, ask you to please vote affirmatively on what the Historic Preservation Board has said, is that we, once again, we become one united city. We are an exceptional city in the state of Florida and in the South. We should capitalize on that. Let that be our brand, that we are one, one united historic district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Charlie Ann Thomas and I'm a resident, I have been a resident of the city of Ponte Gorda for approximately 40-plus years. I've seen a lot of changes, welcome a lot of changes, but then there are some things that need to stay in place. I keep hearing that we want one voice, we want to be one, want Ponte Gorda to be represented by one association. Well, there was an association formed, so if you're for oneness, why are we changing today? That's my question. If it already exists. I've heard this morning, an attack on Mr. Tribune, maybe what was said was true, but how many other officials have had clean slates? And we respect them for what they were, so if the community chooses to use Tribune Woods, so what? How many people in here have, don't have spots on your record somewhere? If we like Tribune Woods, then by all means, let us keep it. I mean, why do we need to change because of the past life? If that was the case, a lot of us wouldn't be sitting where we're sitting today because of things in our past. I say that we need to be just truthful about our reasons for wanting change. What's been presented today is not necessarily the bottom line. So, I ask you to ponder your reasons for wanting to change. If the city has asked a few years back, that association be formed and that it be the voice of the neighborhood, then why suddenly is there, are we being asked to consider another voice? That's my question. Why are we considering another voice? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Regular agenda items? Seeing none, we will move into our regular agenda under budget. First, we have the Tribune Woods Initiative Funding Prioritization List.
Good morning, for the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design Manager. And before you today, we have the funding prioritization list that has been spoken of earlier through the comments. This started back in May. We formed the Tribune Woods Initiative Funding Program when the city decided not to join the CDBG program. We, the council did allow $50,000 to be used in the area for projects. And before you on the, on the screen, there it is, is the prioritization list that has been formed and put together through various meetings that were held in both November and December. They were, a final meeting was held in December to prioritize the list and it is before you today for prioritization. It is just proposed funding, it can be reallocated, those monies can be changed any way you want. This was just a suggestion by the groups that have gotten together and discussed it and formalized this table. I'm available for any questions.
My first question is, the Fresh Market 5,000 annually, is that the only one that's been designated to go for three years?
That is the only one that is for three years and it is 5,000 annually, correct.
Okay. So, the others are just for this next fiscal year only?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And the 15,000 for the furnishings at Cooper Street was discussed at previous council meetings and again, that was the recommended amount. It may be less than that, however, we felt 15,000 was the area to stay with. Procurement has not had a chance to send that out for review. I'm sure we will come in under that, but that 15,000 is for the furnishings at the facility.
Lynn?
Based on some of the comments that were received from the citizens, 15,000 for street lighting, is that going to be adequate?
In order to get the prioritization of all of the projects that they had listed, they, it was decided that the immediate need in that vicinity would be the 15,000 to light up one street near Cooper Street, so that's why it was allotted that much. We, I have not had a study done in that area to see what the needs would be. This was just finalized, so we can, I don't know if that will meet the full needs of the area. That is just one block and it could be funded annually. We could do that a block at a time.
Okay. I want, I mean, safety is absolutely top of the line, important to me, so if that is not an adequate amount of money, then we need to realign some of these numbers a little bit, but
Absolutely.
I want to make sure that we're on the right page.
Again, these numbers are not set in stone, they're just proposals, you may reallocate them as you see fit. Yes?
I can assure you that $15,000 is not an adequate amount to do adequate street lighting in the neighborhood, but it's a start. It is not adequate, it's a start.
The problem with that though, is going in, doing a street, then you wait a year and you do another street. I mean, I just don't know that that's efficient.
Right.
As an efficient way to really correct a problem, if there is an issue. I mean, do we really need a lighting study to?
Would it make sense to not necessarily do all the decorative lighting? Maybe we do less decorative lighting and allow for more lighting? Maybe that's another choice too. I mean, I know it's nice to have, but it's a want rather than a need.
Uh huh.
Just, I mean.
Well, we did the decorative lighting when we did CDBG funding around the Cooper Street Center, so we feel that for consistency, it would be a nice look.
Nancy?
Yeah, I would agree that if we could do the decorative lighting, it would, we do that everywhere else, so I think that we should do it there as well. And I don't know that we would even have enough money to do every bit of lighting that we need, but safety is of utmost importance. I have a question about the Agripreneur Fresh Market Garden, I think it's great. What methodology will we put in place on the distribution of the funds so that, are we just going to write a check and give somebody a check for $5,000? Are we going to, are they going to be turning in expenses and then we pay for that and we have some kind of a checks and balances?
As the agreement has that lined up, we have an agreement with the group and they will be submitting the expenses. It will be available to them in that line item for the budget.
Okay, okay.
Gary?
Just two quick questions. Regarding the funding for the scholarships for the city children, that's for a maximum of 10, I would hope or assume that that does not preclude additional funding for other students that might be allocated in need? I mean, that's from the city, I understand that, but they, they would be allowed to solicit funds from other sources if need be, right?
I'm sure, that has not been discussed as far as I know. Perhaps one of the board members could speak to that, Kathy?
You have to come to the podium.
I am not prepared to, Kathy Getz, for the record, PGHDH away, I'm not prepared to answer that because I just don't know the answer, but I'm sure that there, obviously we could, we could work, we could work through that.
I mean, there's nothing standing in the way from our perspective.
Correct.
We're not putting a limit, say that's a maximum of 10 kids, because that's what we say, if they have 12 kids and they want to find funding from another source, they're more than welcome to do that.
Absolutely.
That's really all we're asking. Okay. The other, the other question, or it's not a question, it's just kind of a, regarding the street lighting, it seems to me that really what we're discussing here is an acute and a chronic issue. The acute issue being what the $15,000 is allocated for and the chronic issue is, as it was pointed out, maybe we should get a light study or something and then find out how to properly fund that for the benefit of this particular area and do that in a proper way. So, I think there's really two problems here. There's one that we can do real quickly, that has a security issue and then there's the other issue and what's really the best alternative for the whole, for the whole community.
Yeah, this conversation right now is actually why the residents felt it was necessary to form homeowners association, because for many years, instead of residents having a voice for the city, you had nonprofit that had its own interest and it would profess to represent residents but had more residents involved with it. And I just want to clear a few things up, there were said that we're not accurate in regard this. One thing, regarding this district and regarding people being invited to meetings, in particular dealing with these priorities and things like that, the list of people who were sent postcards are from the county. If you are a resident in District 1, you've been invited to these things. If not, then you weren't and that's just like if one lived in PGI, one in BSI, one is in their neighborhood. This neighborhood is not a neighborhood where paternalism should be applied to them, where the people here don't have the good sense to know what they want for themselves. We're hitting a point now where there's chronic infrastructure deficiencies because the people who profess to be the leaders of the neighborhood, who did not live in the neighborhood, interface with the city as if they actually were the residents. And as such, the city listened because you had people that were aggressively speaking. But, speaking about this meeting with Reverend Brooks, that meeting was called by Reverend Brooks because this nonprofit organization actually threatened to bring protesters from Amokalee and Clueston because there was actually no neighborhood support for their opposition to Cooper Street and Boys Club uniting, as well as there was no opposition with the residents to these priorities, as well as unification. And so, as in the past, there was going to be, there was going to be a contrived protest of outside people that were going to protest what the city was doing in hopes of causing someone rest. So, Reverend Brooks called everyone to the table and at this meeting, it became clear that, one, Cooper Street, that this, that the Cooper Street's expansion of youth services was something that was positive for the community. Two, that nothing was happening to the neighborhood, that we're going back to a history that always was here. Two, we spoke very seriously about infrastructure, that for many years, this nonprofit had believed because it wanted certain things, that that was good for the community. And so, when we finally got to the conversation, well, what do the residents want? Because we had a very frank conversation, I said, as the residents had said many times, they want infrastructure. And then so, then I was asked at that point, well, isn't the 1% tax opposed to cover infrastructure? I said, yes, this is true, but if you, rather than the residents of District 1 represented District 1 at the 1% tax meetings and did not ask for infrastructure, then we're missing that. The point is that we're finally talking about the things that District 1 needs now, because the District 1 homeowners are now at the table. For many years, the homeowners have been excluded and there's no reason why it should be acceptable at all, that people in District 1 should be disallowed from having a voice on their own affairs. There should not be a situation where outside people, there's no other place, at PGI, you don't have outside nonprofits that speak for PGI and PGI residents don't have a voice in their own affairs. And BSI is not this case. In this case, it's been this way for years. And the thing about it is that even though it may have been purposely initially to create a nice little blighted zone, which you can call Tribune Woods, the problem is because District 1 is one unified district, one historic district, of course, it bleeds over on both sides of 41. And so, now you have a district that we now have, we talk about lights, we also talk about bricks, we have a whole bunch of infrastructure issues in our districts which we need to address. And it's very, very good now that we actually now have our homeowners in place. And when I'm, I mentioning this, is because these things are what finally, we had residents at the table and this is what residents have said that they wanted and I think that needs to be respected. I think that we're just at a different time where we need to actually listen to those people who actually live in Ponte Gorda as primary, as the voice of the people who live in Ponte Gorda. And I think it's not, I don't think it's out of place that residents have a voice in their own affairs.
Thank you. Along that line, I think the scholarships and the teen center funding and the job fair are all great ideas, but I'm hearing that we really need to address the lighting. And I would, I would prefer, if we keep the Fresh Market Garden, obviously we're very committed to that, and the improvements for the Cooper Street, the furnishings, because that helps everybody who uses the center. And then, I don't know if we should go about a lighting study or really get, you know, the need, how we get the need under, you know, back to the table so we understand what we're doing. To just do one street, I don't think it's going to be effective.
I mean, we can do a review of lighting needs, I don't think we need to bring a consultant in.
I was going to say, we're spending more money for what?
That could be.
We know we need lighting, period. I mean, that's important.
I mean, if staff could come up with some initial, I mean,
We can go over.
You could walk the neighborhood and come up with the dark spots, I mean, that can't be that hard to do. Gary?
The collective wisdom of this, of this body in the past has addressed the need structurally of communities. One is particularly drainages of the Boca Grande neighborhood that we've made a long-term commitment to, because that neighborhood was in need because of what it was. I think that this is really a very similar situation. You have, we are a city government and our primary responsibility is the safety and well-being of our cities, both in infrastructure, sanitation services, policing, fire protection, et cetera. And when we can, we have exhibited as a body to be able to do some philanthropic additional issues. I'm going back to what I originally said here, the way I'm seeing this here is there's an acute situation where there is a need for some initial lighting and we should do it properly, but we should also remind ourselves, as has been demonstrated particularly a lot in the last year, that we have a very talented staff that can do a lot of this work. And I have full confidence that we don't have to go to a consultant, but we have a staff that can walk the streets, figure out what we do and put together a plan, because they've done that for us before. And we've all, we've all reaped it. I just, you know, we had a program to improve drainage in the city generally speaking and I just opened up just last week, my flood insurance policy and realized that I had a 25% decrease in my premium. Well, that was because of the efforts infrastructurally that this city did over a period of time. It's not going to happen instantaneously, but when we know where we want to go, infrastructure, this body and this city has been able to demonstrate that it can get there. And I think that that's really what we need to do, is look at the acute situation right now, but also with the idea that we have to address the chronic infrastructure issues for this particular geography, our wonderful city.
Thank you. So, basically we have 50,000 to deal with and I've been, somebody pointed out that that total at the bottom is not.
Correct.
Yeah.
It is not.
Okay. So, I'm good with the first two items. Beyond that, I would like to see the lighting addressed.
I would agree with that. I'll defer to the council member for the district, but it seems like, and I totally respect the input of the residents on all of this, but I think given the lighting issue and the safety, that if we need more lighting in other areas, that providing funding to do that makes sense. Jahah, what do you think?
One thing we spoke about was that however we divided this, we would want to divide scholarships and teen money equally, so if we took one of these line items out, we just divide that in half, 402. So, if this 9,600 or 7,500 could come out and go towards lighting, then that amount could be split between the two and that would be, that would still be what residents said that they want.
Could we though defer that until we get an agenda item back on what the lighting could be and talk about it at that time? I mean, we don't have to decide today, do we?
Again, this is, we have no time limits, this is not CDBG funding.
Right.
This is us. All we've done here as staff is put together the priorities as represented by the neighborhood meetings.
Because I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, that gives us 30,000, because the first two I'm okay with, that's 20,000, so we have 30,000 to deal with. If it's 5,000 per pole, that's basically.
That's an approximate too.
Okay.
When, in talking with Public Works, that could go up or down, so that's an approximate.
I think we really need to get a handle, bring that back, the lighting back as a separate agenda item, to get the, get the real cost of what it would take to really improve the neighborhood and then go from there. As much as I would like to put the scholarship money in, I don't even know if 30,000 will be enough to do one, you know, one street, both sides, you know what I mean?
True, true.
Like, why do we want to go in and come back out and then go back in again? I wouldn't like to see us do that. So, I think we really need to expand the discussion and bring it back as a, as a lighting, get more details on the lighting, how much is needed, where it is needed, what the costs, you know, approximate costs are, and then move on from there. But the first two, we could, we could approve today.
Approve those.
Mm-hmm. Yes?
I'd just like to say that we're talking about the lighting right now, but we also need to go to the second page and look at what the other infrastructure needs for the community. And even though we're not able to snap our fingers and do that instantaneously, we should think in terms of an appropriate long-range plan to address these issues, whether they're sidewalks, drainage issues, et cetera.
When will we find out about the sidewalk funding? Because we, we do have some funding there.
Yes, we do.
We have been in touch with HUD, they are reviewing it.
Do we need more help to get their answer?
We might.
Okay.
We are not moving forward on it.
Okay, we can do that.
That's my point.
Yeah.
The drainage is being handled through our annual drainage program.
Uh huh.
So, well, we need some direction here.
Okay, we need a motion then to?
I'll make a motion that we approve the funds for the Fresh Market Garden and the interior improvements for the Cooper Street Rec Center.
Second.
The others on hold for right now.
Three seconds.
So, we have a motion, a second to approve those two items. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Okay, so we will have further discussion on the lighting needs of the community and move on from there with the other funding that we have available for next year. Okay. Next, we have single source award to Schaefer Consulting for?
Yeah, that's, again, Shinapp reached out, received a grant award from the UPA and we have the recommended firm to do it and we just need your approval.
Move approval, sir.
We have a motion, a second to approve the award, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Next, we have the budget appropriations from '17 to '18.
We have the list together with you, itemized. A lot of this is pretty standard that we do each year. Reserve funds carry over, donation account carry over, specific items that were not completed during fiscal year '17 that we need to carry over into '18, we have it itemized by fund and we would like your approval so that we can manage these.
Any questions on those appropriations?
No.
No. Move approval, second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the reappropriations, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Okay, moving into unfinished business, we have consideration of consolidation of Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. We heard from Planning Commission member earlier.
I was the one that originally asked if we could look into this, just for the sake of figuring out if it was appropriate to keep them separate or consolidate. I am of the firm opinion that we should leave things status quo and I withdraw all my previous comments about trying to change it.
Okay, anybody else have comment?
I'm in concurrence with leaving it as it is. I think it's.
Yeah, so am I.
Okay. Carry on, BZA and Planning Commission.
Do we need a motion on that to make it official?
No.
No. Do good things.
Okay, next we have new business and we have unified branding of city's historic districts.
Before I turn it over to the council member, the historic district residents have formed a new association, to be similar to what PGI, BSI, Burnstorm Meadows, Seminole Lakes. And they did it, they have, they have the paperwork and they're going to represent the historic district from Fisherman's Village all the way down to Cooper Street. And that's something they did independently of the city and they're up and running. So, the issue in front of you today is the residents also brought in front of the Historic Preservation Advisory Board whether or not that we should go and start conducting public hearings through the Planning Commission, which are public hearings, to remove the name Tribune Woods from all of the city's codes and rename the historic district. That is the issue. You're not here to decide yes or no, you're here to give us direction as to whether we need to start scheduling public hearings so that we can get input to decide whether or not we need to take those words out of the codes. That's, that's what we're here to talk about. We're not here to make the call, we're here to decide, should we have direction to start the public hearing process?
This is a process that, it began a long time ago, it just happened now that once the homeowners association was, was formed, that it became viable. Even with the, with the former police chief, one of his goals was he wanted to actually rebrand the area because of the fact that despite it actually having no higher, if in many cases, lower crime rates than other parts of the city, it had this image, this negative image. And then part of this was that with this name that came after Charlie, as opposed to the rest of, the CRA actually having this upward movement, this little carved-out area ended up being almost like a nice little created blighted zone, which was acceptable within our collective imagination as a blitable zone, as opposed to it being part of the city. For the whole time of, of the city of Ponte Gorda, this had been an integral part of the historic district of the city. And then when after, from 2007 on, it became its own little area, which in our collective imagination, which I would say is probably based on a northern type of segregated city based on racial lines, when in fact, the African-American presence in Ponte Gorda was throughout the city, it allowed us to allow for things to languish the way they shouldn't in terms of infrastructure and things like this. And so, in addition to just being practical, we're now in a rebranding of the city, we're actually in a cultural renaissance where we're actually looking back to a more glorious past and we're bringing this back. We actually decided in this case, we're going to put our house back together, you know, as Ms. Wiley says. And that we're putting our stuff together. We were a city that We were a city that even at the time of the height of Jim Crow, were a unified city. We, unlike the north or in the south, acted in a manner which we always were community, and we don't want to have efforts over the last 10 years to undo 130 years of progress. I've had people talk to me recently who've lived their whole lives, said that there's less civic interaction between people in the historic district on the east and west of 41 than there was even during the Jim Crow period. And this is basically based on how we relate to each other. And so part of this, in addition to just the practical reasons of us having a very viable historic area, which like St. Augustine, places like that, which you really can play to, also from the standpoint of caring about our residents, caring about our residents' property values, caring about the economic vitality, I mean, even to the point where, when I was a child, Cockburn Street was full of businesses. Now, we're about ready to do flips if someone opens like Ock's Cart. And it's crazy, because our imagination has lessened that it's not longer part of this collective city. There's no reason why this part of historic district should not be as vibrant as the other part this many years ahead of Charlie. And I just feel that this, in addition to it being historically correct, the fact that Tribute ended in 1887, that we need to just fix this from the standpoint of both social reasons, cultural reasons, historical reasons. And I just feel this is very important, and this is also something that the residents, those who actually live in the area, have desired for themselves as well.
No, not right now, sorry. You're going to have to wait until our discussion's over. So what is the actual suggestion of the renaming?
The renaming is from the standpoint of branding, it's the Pana Gorda Historic District. Like, when you come down 75, Pana Gorda Historic District, that means that when you get to Cooper Street, down to Fisherman's Village, that's all historic district. This also allows us to be able to possibly avail of state money for different markers and with that. It just puts us in a better position as a city to market ourselves. So that's what we want. From the standpoint of east, that's only for technical purposes. Mitchell basically said that unlike what we wanted to do, which is have one area, because you have the area that has the very restrictive requirements, and in the downtown, and in this one, to not mess with all of the codes. We need to have, we need to demarket different ways. And the easiest way to demarket would be east, downtown...
Can you put the map up so that we have reference to the areas?
And so this name, east, wouldn't be noted anywhere except for in our code. The actual branding would all be just historic district. And that's all this is, is that we simply want to restore that this older part of Pana Gorda would all be one unified district, as it always had been.
So, well, he's getting that up there. So you're saying that it would be a name change only?
Yes.
Not the LDRs, the codes?
No, no, all of that would be exactly, no one wants to toy with that. It's the name.
The name.
Just the name only, nothing else crazy.
So when he gets the map up there, we'll have a better idea of what we're talking about. So you're saying that the National Registered District has the more strict codes?
Yes.
You still want the codes to stay the same, but instead of the delineation of the word Tribute Woods, it would say Eastern Historic District?
Yes. And that, again...
East or eastern?
East. I mean, that's only for the point of the code. I mean, outside, it's going to be historic district.
Okay.
And from a marketing standpoint, we're only going to refer to it as the historic district.
Yes.
So it's really an internal accounting...
Yes.
...nomenclature, so to speak.
Because we're not changing the LDRs that go along with this map?
No.
Okay. Here, do you want this for the Elmo? Mitchell?
We have a map, Mitchell.
No, he has the map.
He's still with Watson.
The old-fashioned way.
As he puts the map up there, for a little history, after Hurricane Charlie, when we revised our land development regulations, the regulations in the purple area and the regulations in the, is that yellow?
Yeah, orange.
Orange is...
Orange?
It looks yellow there.
Not green.
We, back in around 2006, I think, or '07, something way back then, we changed some of our regulations to relax some of our building requirements in the area, yellow or orange, I don't know what color that is, to differentiate it from the National Registered Historic District. So what's being proposed is to change nothing in the actual building regulations. It's just a name change. That's what is being proposed.
Will this affect any of the properties in the historic district in terms of having to adhere to historic?
No.
Nothing changes? Okay. Because that's certainly...
That's what they're asking for now, is that nothing else changes except for the name. The basic districts stay the same with the same LDR rules and ordinances, but in the code, it's written in the ordinances, the titles of the ordinances have to be changed if we change the name of the district.
Yes.
Okay, and one other question I have. What happens to the Tribute Woods United Association?
I mean, they still exist and still advocate. I mean, like, when we spoke at Reverend Brooks' meeting, I was very clear, I said I had no intention of going against whatever their financial desires are, but nonprofits exist for the purpose of facilitating residents' needs, not dictating what residents should have. And so I said that if what residents express their need, they advocate on that behalf, more than happy to help them do so. There's no issue other than that. But it has been understood that nonprofits can't dictate residents' needs for them.
Any comments?
Well, I know that on a personal level, I've been advocating for the community to grow a voice and have a voice. Been working with Anna and Isaac for years. So having a voice is critically important, and having people, and Martha, and, but I understand exactly what you're saying, Jahah, because as I've been pondering this whole thing, there's a distinct difference, as you pointed out, between a homeowners' association and a community group. And there's nothing wrong with the community group at all, providing input. We have lots of community groups, and we love the community groups. They do wonderful things for our community in partnership, in collaboration, but it's different than a homeowners' association. And I think what, that's what this boils down to, to me, is the difference between a homeowners' association, which, you know, even where I live, in Burnsthor Isles, we have people who are tenants that can participate, they're non-voting, but they can participate. And they can come to the meetings and express their concerns, and they do. And we welcome that. And I know that, I'm sure that happens in PGI as well. So it's not exclusive, but it's inclusive from that regard. So I think that, you know, and I get the name, and I don't know when we started to actually use the Tribute Woods name, but...
It was a few years after the hurricane.
Yes.
It was brought to us by the...
You know, and good things have been done by the organization, so it's not like this is a meaning to be disparaging on anyone's part. It's meaning to recognize everyone is working together. So I would be in support of us taking this to the next step.
I know when I first got on council, people, there was confusion with even the word woods. Like, people thought there were really trees and woods down there.
Where's the forest?
Yeah, there was confusion over the name. So to say it was, like, really clear, it wasn't for me, and it wasn't for people asking me. Like, you know, they thought they were going to go down there, and there were, like, hiking trails and woods that they could go through, and that's not the case. And I think when we put up a lot of the wayfinding, you know, the name was really out there then. And that's when, you know, it became, and we've seen, you know, that area, like you're saying, we turned those units that we tried, we tried the commercial element over there, and it didn't succeed. So I think anything that we can do to try to even further revitalize the area would be useful, would be helpful, and, you know, steps forward.
I think the most important thing of all of this is to unify the community and bring everybody together for the greater good. And I think that the two groups obviously need to talk to each other a little more closely.
Yes, communication has to...
And try to work better together.
Yes.
No matter what happens. I have no problem with changing this to the historic district overall, and trying as little as possible to separate the three historic districts from one another. And I think that will help bring a unified front to the whole rebranding process for the city, and it'll all kind of fold together as time goes forward.
So what direction do we have?
I would agree with that, what you said, Lynn, about more community discussion amongst people. But I think that taking this, as far as I'm, I think, taking it to the next step.
And I think if communication goes out, like you said, postcards went to homeowners, residents...
Yes.
Churches, any entity that has a physical address should be on those mailing lists.
That works.
Everybody.
And making sure all registered voters are included in that process.
Oh, yeah.
That's a very important part of it.
Yes.
So do we have direction to take it to the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
Yes, take it to the Planning Commission. No, I mean, no, this has to go through several iterations before anything happens.
All right, and there'll be time for public comments or...
Multiple times, because I don't, how many ordinance changes does this mean?
Well, and that will become evident. In fact, I'm thinking of how to word the title for the ordinance so that we don't have to redo it and re-advertise. And I'm getting at least a consensus, I hope I'm saying this correctly, for a unification of the historic district with amending those portions of the code that need to be amended to be consistent with the unification. And I'm saying the word potential, but it would also include the renaming of certain portions of the district for identification purposes, without deciding in the title what that new name for identification purposes would be. And so two things immediately come out, and that is that it will become more apparent what the distinctions in terms of specific code provisions are currently in our code between, let's say, the historic, the register district and other portions within the historic district, number one. And gives an opportunity to decide for the purposes of the practical distinction between certain areas of the unified historic district, if that remains necessary, how to identify those districts for regulatory purposes only. So that's why I'm suggesting we keep the title as broad as possible, and then as we have the public comment, you'll be able to be in a better position to gauge what needs to be done.
May I also throw in one more thing? I think that as we march forward with this, that the city communications manager be incorporated into this process...
Yes, yes.
Heavily, so that there can be communication on both sides and trying to make things happen in a positive way.
Well, and this is going to take several months for this to happen. This is not going, they're not going to happen next week, and this is going to be a period of time, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
So do you have enough direction at this point? It's going to go to the Planning Commission, and it will be a public hearing, and...
Yeah, we'll put together a draft ordinance.
A draft ordinance has to be put together, and that needs to go to the Planning Commission initially and get their recommendation on the draft ordinance.
Now, sometimes, we have draft ordinances that come back before you to make sure that we're on the same page.
That's true.
We can certainly circulate a draft before it's presented to the Planning Commission.
And then if one of us...
And if one of you want to say, no, you're off track, then we would appreciate the guidance.
That sounds good.
Sounds good.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program update, and we'll have citizens' comments at the end of the meeting on any topic.
Good morning and Happy New Year. Jennifer Hecker from the Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program. Hopefully, our presentation will be up shortly, but basically, we were asked to give you a presentation to update you on what the program's done in the past year, what we are planning to go forward to serve this city. And we saw your rebranding Florida's harborside hometown, and that just fits perfectly with our partnership with you all, because it's...
Oh, gosh. Oh, no. Ray, Ray Briggs. Let's take a recess.